This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call the board and Monterey Select Board meeting October 6th at 12:00 PM noon. And all members are present here in Town Hall. Our first item of business is meeting with Sophia Butts, so it's our Human Resource Director. And we have six items to deal with you. So the first one being general updates. But we can move if there's anything, I guess, that the board members want to speak to briefly, or you want to speak to briefly, otherwise we'll get right into the draft policy.
Is this her opportunity to tell us anything she needs to?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have some ideas for the performance reviews, which I think Melissa was gonna present in the meeting later today, or did you want me to do it right now?
We have that down on what's.
Yep.
Okay, so that's happening, we have like a timeline for that. Uh, we're going to be interviewing chief candidates. Good, I'm working on the handbook and kind of dealing with things that come up in the moment.
How many candidates do we have at this point?
We have two, one external.
One internal, okay.
Yep. On top of that. I'm gonna swear my thoughts today.
Is that, sorry to interrupt, but is that two? There's been two applications so far, that's not been narrowed down at all?
No, we, no, there's been quite a few, but we've narrowed it down based on our criteria.
Okay.
There were some pretty basic criteria points for like they needed a specific certification or license, which ruled them out. So, and some were inquiring from quite a distance. And we all know how it is to try to move out here, so that was factored in as well.
So if you had to estimate, I guess, how many, how many people expressed interest or submitted a application?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Thirteen, sorry.
Twelve, I saw.
Twelve, I saw.
So there's two at this point who would make it to the first round of interviews?
Yes.
And is the advertisement, are we, have we reached the end of the advertising period?
This might be the last week.
Yeah. I think it was a sufficient amount of time. Um, I have a meeting with Terry set up for next week. Um, I'm helping Jim with the review next week as well for one of his employees. Um, and we've also had some other things come up with a few employees, just some meetings have been set up to address those issues also.
So if that's, taking for the updates, um, we can get right into anti-discrimination and harassment policy. Um, and I think the major, so that's number two.
I, can I, I sort of, um, would raise a couple of meta things before we get into the line by lines. So as you know, I think it's really important for us to have a solid policy, no question. I also think that, um, history has shown that the select board itself is not really the, I don't have the training or HR experience, or given OML considerations, the best setup to be the one charged with investigation. And we intentionally went forward with hiring HR because, in part because of that, I mean, for some other good reasons too, don't get it wrong. But I think it's important that we keep in mind that having done that, we need to make sure we let HR do its job and don't constantly second guess everything that they do. Right? The second part of that, I mean, it put, it will put us in an awkward position, I think. Um, particularly because I don't think we're well suited to doing an investigation ourselves. The second part of that is that, um, I think it's also really important to remember that in most cases of harassment or sexual harassment or bullying or whatever, typically, the, you know, the number of outcomes where both people are happy, the complainant and the respondent, is going to be vanishingly small. No matter what happens, someone is going to be unhappy. If we make a policy where we have to reinvestigate and re-adjudicate everything, every time either the complainant or the respondent aren't happy with the outcome, you're basically more or less guaranteeing that we will be keeping HR's work every single time. And I don't think that's a viable policy.
Did anyone make that proposal something?
No, but I just, I'm just putting out there, when we go over these line by line, I think that some of the stuff that you've added in there might end up resulting in that, even if that wasn't its intent.
Well, I see where you're coming from. But, I mean, my general response would be that, assuming, you know, the, the Human Resources Director and the Select Board work together, um, the way that I have it written up, yes, the Human Resources Director does the investigation or an alternate if, if need be.
Necessary.
Um, the fact of the matter and the reason why I wrote it in the way that I did is that at the end of the day, right, if the HR director had hiring and firing power, then they would have hiring and firing power, but that still remains with the Select Board. So I thought it better to say what is the case, which is that upon receiving the report, a report from the Human Resources Director, the Select Board reviews it and then makes a decision as to what to do. The Human Resources Director is gonna make recommendations and findings, findings and recommendations. But the Select Board's not obligated to make the same findings or enact the recommendation. Otherwise, we would just delegate that power. Otherwise, we would say, okay, the HR director's now in charge of discipline and firing.
Agreed.
We're not there yet. And so I felt it better to state what is the case than leave it ambiguous.
I, I totally got your point, I just think that, I don't think it's an accident that, I, you know, at this point, I think I've probably looked at the policies from at least 20 other towns. Admittedly, some of them have town managers, right? But they're all way, way more vague in general, much more like the original policy that, um, Sophia gave us. And I suspect, given that they all have town councils, there's a reason for that. And I'm just cautioning us against over specificity that could put us in an awkward position. I totally understand what you're saying, Justin, and I, I can't disagree conceptually. I'm just saying that, that given how many town councils have vetted policies and what's required by law for us to do, I realize that because we're select board, it's a little different than with a town manager, I get all that. I just think we wanna be careful about what we're guaranteeing we'll do because it also gives either complainant or respondent grounds to put us in a situation where we would literally want to have to, in this room, repeat the entire investigation. And I don't think we're set up well to do that, nor do I think it's advisable. But I suspect it's going to happen if we went forward with things as sketched out. And I know that wasn't your intent, but sometimes things happen that aren't darn intent. You know, like I, I don't think that you were setting it up for that, but I do think the language in part seems to imply that we're like, and I also will put out that we always had that, right? Remember when we had the discussion a million years ago about whether the Select Board had control over its agenda? And I was like, we always had control of our agenda. We could have taken that control at any time. We never needed to spell that out directly, it's our agenda. We can make it if we wanna make it, right? We didn't need to put that into a formal policy because it was always our agenda. All I'm saying is, I think if this is another case like that, we are, the buck does stop here. And should we choose to do that? We could, but if we lay that out in formal language, we may be putting ourselves in a situation where we have to every time. And I don't think that's a, you know, obviously Donna would have to vet, I'm assuming this, that that hasn't happened yet, right?
No, she doesn't.
And there's no reason to ask her to vet something we haven't pulled together, so that makes sense, I'm not, it's not a criticism. Um, but I'm just cautioning us against a level of specificity that no other town has in their policies that I'm aware of. And I don't think that's accidental. That, that's, I'm just putting it out there as we look at this, that we should keep it.
Well, and to go back to why I even edited it in the first place was I think it said something vaguely along to the Human Resources Director conducts an investigation, and then speaks with the Select Board, and then the Select Board can, you know, take disciplinary action if it, if it wants to.
Right.
Does the, is the HR director speaking to each Select Board member individually? Are they providing a written report? Because, and part of the reason I changed this is because if the Select Board's going to deliberate on the discipline of an employee, it needs to meet, and it needs to meet, it needs to invite that employee here. We can't be deliberating on disciplining employees without the employee president. As long as the Select Board maintains the dis, you know, the ultimate disciplinary authority and not the HR director or not a town manager, we are going to need to deliberate, and I just felt, felt like this clearly spells it out. So there's no, um, there's no miscommunications, you know? If Sophia finished an investigation and goes, okay, now says I talk to the Select Board members, is it each individually, what do they do at that point?
Yep, no, I, I see your point, you wanted to make sure the process was clear.
I think that part's fine, because I wasn't aware of the executive session at the time of writing this up.
Speaking of which, the new Myers and Harrington guidance on that, um, that they, they sent out in the bulletin and you forwarded it as well.
That was the Division of Open Government.
Oh, that was, open government, I think, wasn't it in, it wasn't in the Myers and Harrington bulletin? Okay, um, thank you. We actually technically therefore don't have to have those things in executive session?
So, yes and no. What that was commenting on was open meeting law wise. I think you're, I think typically town council is going to recommend, it was saying the open meeting law does not require that discipline and whatever go into executive session. We are allowed to, and I think if you ask town council, they typically recommend it for other reasons, for litigation, yeah. But no, the open meeting law doesn't require, what the, what the open meeting law does require, if I recall correctly, is that if you are going to do those, just deliberate on discipline, you need to le, um, invite the subject of that.
Right.
You can do it in open meeting, you can do it in executive session, but you need to invite.
And they have certain rights under that case, that part I got. It was just whether or not we had to hold it in executive session. But you're right, the council might recommend it.
Well, and that's something that happens, because we've had a few open meeting law complaints that the open meeting law office may say, you know, that's not against the open meeting law, it doesn't mean it's not against other staff, you're right, it's not against open meeting law.
Right, right, that's fair.
All right, but we got into the specifics. I do see that the time requirements that I had put in are one of them is removed, is there a reason?
Um, my reasoning was that, um, investigations can vary quite a bit, and I don't want us held to that standard or two reasons as from like the person who's being accused of somebody, of something, holding us to that deadline and then asking us to throw it out if we don't meet that deadline. And then on the other side, it could be something, it could be a complaint that's super simple and that could take me maybe like an hour to like talk to two folks about it and it's over. So it could take a couple of months, also based on my infrequency in the town, based on how many people are involved in this situation, if I'm actually getting firsthand account from all those people.
So, and I guess.
Which number were we in?
Uh, seven, eight. Um, I guess the, the reasoning that I had behind adding it was I think it's in everyone's best interest usually that it happened in a timely fashion, and every, and all the people involved in reviewing the complaints, the respondent, the complainant, I think, you know, regardless outcome, I think it is best for everyone in the town to move things along. I understand the, the, the fact that some complicated situations may take a lot longer. And I hope ideally that we could set a timeframe in here and also set, you know, if it's gonna take longer, the HR director or other person should alert the Select Board.
I think you actually said that.
I did, I don't wanna, you know, I agree kind of with what Susan was saying, we don't wanna trip ourselves up, but we also do wanna set clear expectations.
So these rules are exclusively for me.
Yeah.
I know, like, the process of performing an investigation, I understand, like, they take priority and they're supposed to be done in a timely fashion. If we take the time period out and then leave your, like, check in, sort of like when I first starting an investigation to meet with the three of you and just explain how long I think it's gonna take, that might better serve this policy instead of just putting like two to three weeks.
Is that something that, I don't remember there being something in here about us meeting with you prior to?
Prior to.
So my only fear, and I did say, I did just say that that sounds like a good go, but a lot of these complaints, I don't think we'll go through all of these numbers of things. As in, some of them may be simple enough to execute and be fine with, just like a corrective action and be done with it. And I know that makes you weary, because it's like the usual disciplinary process that never like touches the Select Board's hand. And I don't know how comfortable you are with that, because that's just usually the structure of HR is that like I'm simultaneously taking care of business on the side and I'm only coming to the three of you in instances where there's like an impasse, it's escalating quickly and it's involving like a lot of people and it's more complex.
Yeah, no, I think we absolutely wanna leave day-to-day items up to you, if I'm not mistaken, I think the board agrees on that. This is, you know, when there's claims of discrimination and harassment that could, you know, affect the town, I think that's kind of why this is only for that, right? Like legal concerns of discrimination and harassment.
Are you saying that there might be some, that fall into that category that you don't think we're even there in?
Yes, because technically whenever somebody speaks to me about a complaint, even if they're like, this is off record, I'm still on record to investigate to a degree. So unless you want me coming to you after almost every conversation I probably have with somebody, then I don't know, I'm just, I was kind of just playing with the wording, as in taking out the date and putting in something that's efficient to hold me to a standard without putting a hard, like, timeframe around it.
Yeah.
Um, so that's an eight, but is it mentioned anywhere else? Or so, can you say that we got no more than two weeks after?
I had a timeframe in, um, about selecting an alternate person. And for, if necessary, an alternate person who can conduct that investigation should be selected no more than one week after the alleged violation is reported to the Select Board or HR.
Okay, before, so I just wanna make sure we're addressing the things that come up. As this is written now, would Sophia have to come to us every time there's any kind of complaint?
Um, I do believe that, and I don't think that the way that I drafted up is different from how we were presented it to begin with in that sense, which is that if there is a complaint, Sophia investigates it, reports back to the Select Board. And then if the Select Board, you know, wants to deliberate and take any disciplinary action, we meet, we have to invite the person who's alleged to have misbehaved. And then that's that.
So let's keep on, wait, can we go on chronological order? Because I think we're like hopping around, yeah.
Because if you read the comments on number two, Sophia and I have already addressed that that really shouldn't go to the Select Board in the beginning.
Oh, should, so should we start with one?
Just, I'm just throwing it out there, maybe go further.
But that's what Melissa was just mentioning, is that we both addressed that, is that typically the structure of complaints is HR exclusively. Because like I said, when I'm given like a complaint, I'm put on notice. I think any, I think you'd be wanting to be put on notice or something.
Well, I think we're mandated reporters, so I don't know.
I'm sorry, I said.
Are we mandated reporters?
Um.
As supervisors and management?
Right, but so we're saying that Sophia would be the first and she would notify me as the town administrator. And then once the investigation has been had, then we bring you guys in. And that's the whole purpose of having HR and a TA is to keep you guys out of HR issues, especially if it's one that doesn't escalate to the matter of, you know, sexual harassment or something like that. If it's something that can be handled by the two of us, we will let you know when it's over what actions, corrective actions were taken. You know, that don't involve firing or anything like that. That, that's how it works in most ever, every town.
But I didn't, and I didn't frankly, I didn't add in that the Select Board should be notified, that was in there. And I, I didn't change these things that are now concerns, right? The Select Board was, the only thing I did is lay out the meeting process more clear.
So you had added in if the complaint, if the complaint is submitted to the Select Board or one of the Select Board members, I would then just take that portion out and just leave it to like, the Select Board will, will like refer the complaint to HR?
Well, it was written, it was drafted as complaint should be submitted to the HR Director or Select Board as soon as possible. So I wanted to clarify that.
Right, what if we just put submit to the HR Director as soon as possible, after incident occurs preferably in writing? And in which case, if someone comes to us, we're like, we need to submit to the HR Director.
Yes, but it, and, and what more or less, I mean, maybe I was too early, but more or less, yes, everything's supposed to be funneled to the HR Director.
Right.
But it's important that if a Select Board member receives a complaint, they bring it to the HR Director.
So let's just delete or the Select Board out of item one, out of the beginning of item one?
Yeah, I can, I can rework that to exactly what we want. I don't think we're gonna be able to finalize this today, but I can.
But that, we gotta start somewhere.
Um, I will rework it to basically just say funnel everything to the HR Director as far as initial complaints.
Um, okay, number two.
Mickey, did you still have a comment?
No, I was just thinking when you were talking about timing. The timing to start an investigation is more important than how long it takes. In other words, it should be, as soon as a complaint is received, investigation should start, you know, within a comfortable time, because like you're saying, I hear 24/7. The length of the thing takes is gonna depend on all the variables. So I think it's the starting time is more important than the ending time.
Yeah.
And I don't know everything that's in there, because I haven't read any of it. So that's just what I was getting out of listening.
Thank you.
So. What if, what if, um, in the interest of time and getting to everything, are we meeting at 12:30 with the banker?
Yeah, hopefully I can.
Okay. What if I reworked this with Sophia now that I made my changes and she's made changes? And reflect it so that minor, you know, generally, without going line by line, minor complaints will be dealt with. And if something major comes up or it's like escalating or repetitive or something like that, then basically putting something, you know, halfway through the process, if it's, if it's a minor thing that can be dealt with, minimal corrective action, and maybe Sophia still notifies the board to let us know, because it's a pretty, a claim of harassment or discrimination's pretty serious, and I think we should know about it. But the board doesn't need to necessarily take it up if that corrective action is already been in place and the board feels comfortable with that. And I'll rework it to that effect.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll go from there, does that work?
Yeah.
Um, and I will also speak with Donna about how specific we should or shouldn't be.
Exactly.
Because on one hand, I can understand why we wanna be vague, but on the other hand, I do like a clearly laid out process, that way we all know.
What's expected.
What's going on.
Um, and, yeah, so to that effect, I think, um, I know we need to move on.
I did forget one update as well. Yeah. Um, department head meetings?
Roundtable, department roundtables?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know there, you and Melissa were at impasse as to do them, what, in quarterly or monthly? I am per month really right now, because I think especially in this town, we need to try to improve our culture quite a bit and bringing everyone together to kind of just simply socialize and interact with one another and only benefit everyone in like a fortification of culture sort of way. Um, and then on top of that, uh, it's good for all of us to know what the other departments are doing as well. I mean, I've lived in that kind of system too in a lot of my past jobs, and it really does benefit, especially with culture.
My, my concerns, which I think Melissa was addressing, I'm not sure if she's resolved in that, was what time, as we have employees who have completely opposite schedules. And who exactly is being invited goes on the same lines of the review process. Our departments are so varied, we have elected boards on occasion, we have contracted firms that do the work that used to be done by.
So she has the list of everybody we could start it on.
Are you hanging around or you, we could come back to you after we do the banking, or you have to again?
Yeah, I have to, unless it's very pertinent that I be here.
Um, so I will rework this policy with you, Sophia, and then we'll come back to it next week.
Okay, when do you wanna review the policy with me?
You're here next Wednesday? Yeah, well.
Unless I should come back today?
No, no, um, I'll have to have something to do by next week at the latest.
So I do have a few meetings next week, so, um, two, two, 3:00 PM, maybe, does that sound?
Yeah.
Later in the afternoon?
Let, let's be in touch about that.
Okay.
Um, department head reviews, town clerk recommendations, employee handbook, we will, is there anything pressing that we should deal with before our next meeting?
Our next meeting, meeting a month from now?
Yeah, kind of.
Right. Um, I, I think, I'm just gonna throw out there for future reference that if we're gonna have conversations about difficult draft policies, allocating six items for a half hour before another meeting might not be the best timing. I think it happened, whatever.
In normal circumstances, she would have been here on a Wednesday, or she would have been able to stay.
There, yeah, pointing.
Because the meeting is on Thursday.
Pointing, um, okay, so, um, wait. Um, okay, so I, does any of this, how much of this needs to get done before a month from now? Do we have to have a meeting that's another new meeting, so?
No, we can make decisions, you know, if we can communicate with Sophia as well. The one thing that I said about department head reviews was similar to, or in all employee reviews is a very clear list of everyone who's being reviewed and who's reviewing them.
So we have, I, I have that information actually.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I don't have a list, because I didn't know you were looking for a list, but I can probably come up with that.
I just know because.
I think it might just be simpler to tell you who we won't be.
Right.
Well, yes, well, no, but yes and no. I mean, if we have, we have a lot of appointed people to.
No, that's what I mean, yeah.
There's a lot of people who aren't going to be, that are in some way involved with the town.
Well, you're working the bank, I'll make a list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's just the department and appointed structure is very complicated and I wanna be just clear, that's all. Um, and you're working on, we're doing one policy at a time, or you're doing a review of the employee handbook more all at once?
I think I'm gonna start just doing it all at once.
Yeah.
Um, that seemed to work better in Sheffield and I've already completed theirs, so I think we just need to be left mound with lice for a little.
Yeah.
And, um, of course with adding our additions that we've already worked through.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is he here?
Yes, David.
Thanks, Sophia.
Yeah, thank you, so I will.
Do you need me to stay or am I okay?
No, I'll be in touch with you about that.
I feel bad for leaving.
No, I just don't think we can rework it with everyone all at once. Come back with a, um, one final policy. Thank you for joining us, Sophia.
Yes, nice to see the three of you.
Yeah, hi David, can you hear us?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us. Um, we have a couple items. We're working on the note for the library and the note for highway equipment today.
Right, and actually it's gonna be a combined note. That's how it will be considered to be a municipal purpose note. Uh, so it'll be one set of documents for the renewal. Uh, I sent to the treasurer, Sarah Hunter, a draft bid form that would accommodate the paydowns contemplated on the library and on the fire equipment. Uh, the total amount of the borrowing would be $1,045,373.79. Uh, 875 of that would be for the library, uh, which would reflect a $125,000 paydown. Uh, 100,000 of which was, uh, uh, in the budget and 25,000 came from, uh, some funds, I guess, provided by the library. And then there's a, was a paydown, um, uh, uh, about 20, the 20 some thousand dollars on the fire equipment, which is how we come up with the balance, uh, on the, uh, on this amount of, uh, the 10457373.79. And the plan is to release this spreadsheet next week for, uh, that will go to treasurer Hunter on Wednesday, October 19th. We would have documents signed sometime by the following week of the October 24th. Uh, does not have to be done in a, an open meeting, as long as you get two members of the board plus the town clerk plus the treasurer to sign the documents. Uh, the process then is that the treasurer would upload the documents to, uh, the Division of Local Services gateway system. I believe that that would, that was the process used last year. That's been in place at the Division of Local Services since Labor Day of last year. Uh, and then settlement would occur on November 2nd, which is when the, uh, current note matured. So that, the plan, the plan is to roll this for one year. I think that, uh, in talking with treasurer Hunter about this, um, this approach, uh, you know, rates have come up quite a bit. Um, and so, uh, doing a permanent financing at this point would be, uh, less advantageous than it might've been at some prior point uh, or at some future point. And the thing is, you have some additional flexibility in terms of paydowns, which you're actually using with this issue. So that's, I think, one reason to at least proceed with, uh, the one-year note in this instance. And we can revisit other options. November 2023, we can have a discussion well in advance of that maturity, if that's the pleasure of the board and the treasurer. For you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, he means highway department equipment, not fire.
Yeah, so we can continue to do a one-year note until we feel like it makes sense to uh, take out a law for lock-in rate and a loan.
Right, well, actually, the, under the Mass statutes, you have up to 10 years to roll temporary notes, but that, uh, we're talking about, uh, 2029 in the case of the library. So you have a lot of time to make that decision.
And so, probably more of a question from Melissa. The departmental equipment is, we're not paying for the new 550 yet.
No, this is the tandem axle.
The dump truck.
Yeah, and the reason we have some paydown is because he didn't end up using all the money to outfit it. So just applying it back to the 200,000 that was taken, just in case he didn't need all that money.
So it just cost us 170?
Right.
Okay, I remember, okay. So we're not actually adding anything. The only thing we're paying down on the tandem axles, the.
Then you still note taking out for 200,000.
We're just, but we're, we're just paying it now with money that we never spent.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
What is it, unissued balance?
Uh, the unissued balance, the town never issued the full amount of the original authorization. Uh, the original amount of the, uh, library notes was about $1,986,000. The borrowing authorization was for $2,340,000, which is the reason you have this unissued balance. Uh, I mean, at some point, it may make sense for the town to go back to town meeting and rescind that borrowing authorization, since it's still on the books, but not likely to be used.
I, that all makes sense to me. Mickey?
I just had a question, because I wasn't clear on what he was saying, or David was saying. Are we combining the library note with any other notes? Or are we leaving that separate as we've had before?
This is going to be, uh, through the chair. This is gonna be a municipal purpose loan, uh, with the same, uh, it's gonna be one note, uh, with the same delivery date, the same settlement date, and the same maturity date. Uh, I mean, on the books of the town, it will be separate borrowings, but, uh, under the Massachusetts statutes, the, uh, the town is allowed to combine purposes, uh, for, you know, to achieve economies of scale rather than having two separate note issues. The purposes are combined into one municipal purpose note issue. This is a very customary, um, approach to, uh, how cities and towns in Massachusetts do financing.
But it will be very clear within this town of the exact balance that is held by the, uh, library, which isn't really clear on the books anyway.
The town accountant, it should be very clear on the books of the town accountant. What is for the library, 875,000 will be for the library. And the balance of the amount, the 170 and change will be for the departmental equipment. In fact, that's the purpose of the municipal purpose loan plan that we provided to the treasurer and to the, and by extension to the board.
And so we can, until 2029, unless we lock in right before then, we can pay these down at our leisure?
You'll, there are requirements, uh, minimum requirements for the amount of the paydowns. Um, at this point, there's no requirement until '24 on the equipment, but you, you are, and the, what, the 100,000 that the town is currently paying, budgeted for paying on the library is well more than enough to satisfy the minimum statutory requirement for a paydown. But, um, really, the, the, the amount can be certainly above that minimum amount. The minimum amount, I think, is, uh, 57,143, I believe, is the amount of the minimum paydown, so. Uh, the, but the town, uh, you know, if the town wants to make additional paydowns, it's certainly, uh, it's within the power of the town to do that.
Which we have done, as I understand it, right? Because we've been paying more than 57,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
70, it's actually 70,000. I don't know where I got, 70,000 would be more. But in any case, the 100,000 is well in excess of that amount, of that minimum amount.
So Melissa, just for example, when we are able to get a truck, like Article 4 and special time meeting, will that go right into an agreed-upon loan? Or will it end up on this sheet where we take notes on it?
So David, correct me if I'm wrong, we have another, um, authorization to borrow, but Jim hasn't found a truck yet. So once he does, Sarah would then take out a loan, but we wouldn't get a payment until the following year, correct?
Right, so for example, if you, uh, take delivery of the truck or need to make payment of the truck, and I'm gonna pick a date of March 15th of 2023, what would likely happen is that Sarah would arrange a short-term borrowing, probably from March of '23, and have that, I mean, it's not, uh, required, but it would kind of make sense to have that note come to in 20, fiscal year '24 at the same time as these notes. So you would run a note, uh, from whenever you, whenever the new money is issued for the equipment, run that to, uh, November 2nd of '23. But again, that's, that's not an absolute requirement, but it's, uh, um, it would make, it would make some sense to do it that way.
Are there any other questions? Uh, David, would you require, would you prefer that the board motion to, you know, put out the note for $1,045,000?
That is purely up to, that's the pleasure of the board. Uh, the only requirement here is that when, you know, when you get the, you know, if we follow, we'll be following through on this plan to have the bids on the 19th, that when you get the documents on, say, the 20th or 24th of October, that at least two of the board members sign the documents, uh, the town clerk and the treasurer, as long as everybody signs the documents, and then, um, the treasurer uploads them, that would be fine. But if, um, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you, if you would feel, if you feel it's appropriate for the board to make a motion of that nature, I would not, that there would be no objection to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we all agree on this?
I'm just, so forward with the note.
With the note, with the note. Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion, or should we?
Yeah, no, okay, I'll move that the town, uh, issue a borrowing anticipation note for $1,445,373.79 for paying down the library and the dump truck. It's a one-year note.
Second.
Is there further discussion, comment, there being an, we'll call a vote?
Yep.
Susan's yes.
Yes.
Scott, yes, and Justin, yes. Okay.
Thank you, David.
Well, thank you. Nice to see you all, and, uh.
Yeah, thank you.
Forward any questions to Sarah. I'll make sure I'll get back to all of you with any answers you need.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good care.
Do you wanna, um, I just wanna put to bed one thing from the previous meeting?
Yes.
So my, my biggest concerns when you're going back over it are kind of like eight and nine, I think. Plus, all the things we mentioned before, but, um.
Okay, let's see. So after the slideboard is reviewed.
The, the specific lines will not necessarily come in the same conclusions as they had all here in conducting. The slideboard should review. I mean, it's true, we might not come to, um, I just, you know, we'll review all of the documents and materials and shall meet with each respondent individually to deliberate. Um, all of that's true. I, I'm just concerned that it may put us in a situation where we're being asked to second guess HR and repeat the investigation.
So we are and we aren't.
Right.
I mean, no matter which way you word it, or if you don't include it in the policy, it is, unless we fundamentally change something, the select board who makes final decisions in these cases.
It always is.
Right.
I'm just suggesting that if you're, you know, with legal language and see what Donna says, but my understanding is the more specific you are, the more you lock yourself into having to do that and open your up, self up to someone contesting your decision. Whereas if it's more general, you can, you have the freedom to do so without being so required. That, that, I'm, that's what I'm putting on the table. I could be wrong. I am not legal counsel.
Yeah.
Right, but those are my concerns. I just wanna be aware of them when you went forward with that thought.
I, yeah, all right.
And I'm not suggesting we might not want to.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna lock us in a situation where we have to.
Well, we do have to make final decisions in these cases, right? And as long as it's us, I mean, if we want to change, not every case.
Yeah?
Yeah, so that's gonna be in here, which is that minor, non-severe cases don't necessarily become the board.
Right.
But in a, in a, in a case where the HR director refers the matter to the board with an investigation and requests, or recommends disciplinary action, the point, the point that I'm making here is that the select board then at that point considers everything and makes a decision. That may or may not be the recommendation. Correct. But I think when I add in that minor, uh, instances, non-repetitive instances will be dealt with by, you know, at the lower, or at the, um, more immediate levels and with the human resources director, only if it's significant enough where the HR director refers it to the board.
Right.
She will provide us with a written report, which will then consider and make a final decision. I mean, people, there can always be pushback from one party or another on the slideboard. And the other point is that at the end of the day, the only pushback will come to the slideboard, because the slideboard makes the final decision. It's not like, well, we never have delegated the authority.
I, I agree with you. I'm just saying, my, my understanding of harassment complaints is that there's always an aggrieved party after the decision is made. The number, the frequency of instances, by the time something is significant enough to get to the board, the frequency of instances where one of the parties isn't gonna be unhappy with the decision is close to zero. I don't wanna lock us into a situation where we have to re-investigate and question everything every time. That's all.
No, we're not, you were not obligated to. It's just that when we do review it and deliberate.
But I think we, my point is, I think we have that right, whether it's explicitly stated in there or not. Just like we had the right to change our own agenda anytime we wanted. Like, we may not have exercised it, but to me, we didn't have it.
Yeah.
So maybe it's better to not be that specific and just exercise the right if we have to.
Okay.
But the right prevails, then the right prevails.
Yeah.
It's kinda like saying that twice.
Exactly. But you're like opening that door for someone to demand that we do it.
Well, you said you would.
Right, like, that's all.
All right, I will, yeah, and I will work on that with Sophia and try and come up to something that I can present that we can get approved on.
Sounds good.
Um, the first item of all business is planning for special time meeting. So I know sometimes, you know, board members kinda divide up the items. It's a pretty short warrant.
Four items.
Four items.
Yeah. Um, it's the trees, the legal fees, the free, the bills that got carried over.
Yeah.
And what's the fourth one?
It changing the wording so that we can buy any kind of truck, just a 550. Um, the one slightly complicating factor is that the legal fees question. Um, I'm not sure if Jeremiah has responded yet. I will follow up with Alex, um, who's working in place of Nana.
Right.
Um, and see if he has responded. We may.
I mean, we may not know till a day or two before it. Like, that's not an impossibility, as long as we know before.
Tableau. We don't have to, so, the conversation to have.
Well, the other thing that's going on is, uh, we found out that the deductible is probably going to be 2,500 instead of 1,000. So we may need to ask for that additional 1,500. If nothing changes for Jeremiah. But I'm happy to spearhead that.
I mean, it's such a small list.
Does it?
I, I don't think there's gonna be much conversation at all, really.
I mean, the, the, the rollover bill seems very straightforward. I think.
The wording of the truck is totally understandable.
And, and I don't foresee a lot of problems. I mean, it's pretty clear about the trees too. And, you know, making a statement about why we think it should be fixed should be pretty straightforward. I think either of us could do it. You wrote the article, go for it. I think you're really on top of all the specifics and we'll word it well. I, I don't think there's anything super contentious here.
Good. All right, we're all set there. So then comes our next item, which is early voting hours for the state election.
I thought we already did this.
We did. So here's what had happened, is the select board agreed to 9:30 to 1:30 on Saturday, October 29th, as well as any other hours. We had to by October 2nd set the hours for early voting, which only required four hours on that weekend. But since the clerk has proposed extending those hours and the specific weekday hours, October 26th, 10 to 7, October 28th, 7 to 7, the 29th, 9 to 2, the 2nd, 10 to 7, and the 4th, 11 to 7. So if there's no, um.
Can, so all of these except for the Saturday hours are the ones we were stipulated? Then we could, because it, those are all within her operating office hours, which is what we suggested, except for the. Then we could, cause it, those are all within her operating office hours, which is what we suggested, except for the Saturday hours.
I think those Friday hours are longer than, what is she supposed to be until five forty-five?
I think it's seven forty-five, I think it's forty-five minutes short of her hours, I do believe I looked it up.
I'm pretty sure it's seven forty-five, cause I was.
That's what it says on the website, anyway. And I figured, cause I remember looking at it and thinking, oh, she probably wants to shut it down, right? So then nobody comes in and she's walking down the door, which makes complete sense. Um, my only question is why she's extending to five hours since it's an extra hour.
On Saturday.
On Saturday, that we have, like, that's beyond her normal number of hours, why do we need it?
Does that bother us?
I don't know, we have to pay her for it, do we need it, is my question? We only require to do four hours.
More than what the budget is, is that right?
I, one would hope not, but I.
She has a budget to do the work proposed in the budget process.
Right.
There it is, you run out of money, she's working for free.
Or she's just not working, because we can't ask her to work for free, that would be illegal.
Well, you have to work within your budget, you can't just sit there and go over budget every year because I worked extra hours.
I'm not gonna dispute that, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm okay with it as long as we're all clear that at the end of the day, it has to fall within her budget, that's all I'm saying.
Correct, and the rest of her year needs to stay within her budget.
But if we keep approving extra hours, what's gonna happen at the end of the year? I'm just.
I, I understand what you're saying.
But I agree, I, I don't, we only required four hours, so I didn't see why we needed more than four hours. But if everybody feels like we should have more hours, I'm okay with it.
Well, I guess there's a philosophical difference between. See, I, I, I think she could work as many hours as she wants, but at the end of the year, if there's still three more weeks to go, and she's worked through her budget because of erroneous spending or adding extra hours here and there to cover things that she was supposed to cover during her normal hours, and you got some makeup work to do, girl. I mean, if I get a budget to build somebody a house and I go over by a hundred grand, I don't go to them and say, I could really use a hundred grand, they're gonna look at me and laugh. You know, I have a budget to stick to, I can't go over, she has a budget, every single department has a budget. I've always been opposed to budget, to departments that run over their budget without prior authorization. And I, I just think that it's poor management.
I, I'm not, I, I don't dispute anything you're saying, Scott, I just would like to see us not be in a position where we're short of clerk services, we're doing transfers, and, and it was because of poor planning, but then we're stuck with it at the end of the year.
Well, it goes back to monthly reports from every department as to where they are with their dollars.
Okay.
And where they, where they thought they would be and where they actually are, because if there's discrepancies, then they need to toe the line.
I, I'm not gonna dispute it, I'm just saying that here would be an example of an hour I think is unnecessary.
I would totally agree with you.
So, I would like to remove it, cause I think it's unnecessary, if you guys think it's important, I will, I will be swayed by that argument.
Okay, I don't think we should remove anything until we discuss the clerk, why she added, it's not just jumps into the fire again.
I don't disagree, I'm just gonna say we're under a time thing, because it is an early voting thing.
Everything we, she's put down.
Right.
Runs with what we've said for open hours.
Except for the extra hour that she put in.
Well, you can have extra hours, you can't have less hours, because it's posted, it's posted, it's posted.
So, we just leave it to what we, we agree on.
Well, we should ask her, why the extra hour, and where is that coming from in the budget?
And in the meantime, it stays posted as is.
Well, it stays posted as what we set.
That's what, what, but we did set nine thirty to one thirty, so it stays posted nine thirty, one thirty, and we get it, did you, do you know why she extended it?
No, but I was going, I was willing to accept it because I felt like it's good to do.
Well, I'm willing to accept it, but I'd just like to know what's up, where's the hour getting to come?
We didn't post sufficient hours last time, and I felt like this is good and it's clear, and I was willing to accept it. Uh, but if the board wants more of an explanation.
I just wanna make certain that at the end of the year, we have a clerk that still has money in the budget up until the last day of the fiscal year, as does every other department. And if there are overages due to unforeseen things, understandable, that's unforeseen, but if you're just adding hours to perhaps increase your wallet each week, well, then that has to be addressed. Correct.
This goes along with what I was asking you last week of where if an employee has to work over, they should get it approved by their immediate supervisor first, because then it's on record what emergency came up or why the hours are needed and be justified, other than an employee just really nearly being able to do it. And I understand what you're saying, Scott, but what happens if, let's just say, building inspector, he, he does that, let's say he works all the hours he needs and at the end of the year he doesn't have enough, what if he quits beforehand and that budget's been spent? And then we have a new person coming in that doesn't have the fourteen hours that were supposed to be only fourteen hours a week, you know what I mean? Like, that's where I think the partner should be responsible for their budget, but their immediate supervisor should be responsible for approving any additional time.
So, that immediate supervisor is the one that's gonna go through monthly budget sheets with these people?
So, let's just say in this case, it would be me, I would have that person come up to me and say, where are you at with your budget? Why do you need this? Why can't it be done in the allocated hours you have this month? And you have an assistant, why can't the assistant help you with this? And there would be many questions that I would ask in this, in this scenario.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that.
I'm also gonna throw out that this is another example of poor communication. We set hours.
Right, and then all of a sudden.
We set hours, and all of a sudden we get back a, a re-proposal of hours that are sort of like the ones we set, but differently, there's zero justification of why the changes were made. And now, it's gonna take, and she's on vacation, so we can't actually date, so now it's gonna have to wait a whole nother week's cycle to be fixed, even though the deadline's rapidly approaching, it's just another example of problematic communication.
I think that what you, you raised a good point is that, I'll try to, I'm using French. It has to stop, we don't expect a counter-proposal to our proposal, our proposal is the bottom line. There's no negotiation of that unless you're ill, sick, something serious is gonna take place during that time.
Or there's some substantive reason it has to be changed, in which case you need to be clear about what that is and not just be throwing your roses back and forth.
We can't keep saying, we're expecting somebody to do this, this, and this, and they're gonna come back and say, well, we'll do this, that, and so.
I'm just keep the ones we, so.
But one thing we didn't do clearly is, is lay out the week hours, and would we be.
Hours for who?
The, the weekly, uh, the hours during the week for early voting.
I think we did, we said they would be the hours she had, the normally posted hours.
My, my question to get some movement on this issue is, would the board be willing to accept October twenty-sixth, ten to seven, October twenty-eighth, eleven to seven, October twenty-ninth, nine thirty to one thirty, November second, ten to seven, November fourth, eleven to seven?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, mine, my October twenty-ninth is nine to two.
Yeah, but would we be willing to say?
But we had originally said nine thirty, one thirty.
Well, that's what we said.
Yes, that is what we said.
Yeah, so, if the board's willing to accept that, I will move that we set early voting hours at Town Hall for the location and October twenty-sixth, ten to seven, October twenty-eighth, eleven to seven, October twenty-ninth, nine thirty to one thirty, November second, ten to seven, and November fourth, eleven to seven.
He's just saying, when we said what the weekday hours, not the Saturday hours would be, we just set per normal hours, and this is a little bit short of that, which is fine. Like, it just officially says what those early voting hours are.
That's a move, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any further discussion or public comment? Okay, call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Justin, yes, we're not, we're not gonna revisit this, cause, you know, there's all of it.
Thank you.
Um, so Melissa, you've got that in there, so it's everything in the proposal except nine thirty to one thirty on October twenty-ninth. And can you please post those to the website, and I will be in touch with the registrars, um, cause they will need to do everything they need to do with them, which they need to do by October seventeenth.
And that will also be forwarded to Terry?
Yes, I will tell the clerk and the registrar what the decision was.
Can that decision come from the TA rather than you?
If you want.
Well, that's the chain of command, right?
Sure.
Am I wrong?
Did we, did, well, the thing is, we never formally changed it, we said that we were gonna consider changing it, but to my knowledge, we never formally took Justin out of that loop and said that we were going to require renewed communication.
Although I did, we're taking him out of the loop, but I think we're just instilling the normal chain of command. And just because this person and these two people have had communication issues in the past, it's time to stop.
I don't disagree with you, but we've never formally said that.
We don't have to formally say that, it is a policy, Sue, that the TA is, is the person in charge.
But we subsequently replaced that policy by putting Justin in.
Forwarded it, huh?
We did, and not before.
Well, that's fine.
Before you.
Uh-huh.
Um, yeah, Justin was acting as her, what was the right phrase?
Direct report.
Direct report, so in order to go back to the original way it was, we will have to make a motion and enact that.
I saw that.
Okay, the movement is.
That the town administrator sends this information to the clerk and any other information from the state board, just like they would to any other department, you may still maintain your position as direct contact, but the flow of information has to begin somewhere.
And I.
If she doesn't read it, we can't force her to read it, we can't force her to respond, we're gonna tell her, like I thought we did, that it's, from now on, you're sending information to Melissa.
So, can I, can I amend your motion that uh, the, the town, town administrator, town clerk will resume written communi, written communications to each other?
Mm-hmm.
And that, that the board expects that the town clerk will read and respond appropriately to communications from the town administrator, because to say that she gets them and say, well, I didn't, you know, well, I didn't know.
Exactly.
You didn't know because I didn't read them, is unacceptable.
Will we resume written communication, which means reading back and forth?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, okay, so we will, is there any further discussion or comment? Okay, we'll call a vote on the motion that the town administrator and the town clerk will resume written communication back and forth with each other.
As needed, sure.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know, I don't know if I should've said as needed, but.
Yes.
I'll be frank, okay.
You're right.
Call a vote on that motion, Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye, yes.
And Justin, yes, so the motion carries, and then can you please notify Terry of the hours that we set for early voting? Melissa?
Yeah.
Tell her that they're at Town Hall, cause that was one thing that we had to do, which we may have already done, but just to be clear. And also, please notify the registrars, which I think was, this Stievels, and, no, actually just Scott Stievel and Rebecca Wolin. Um, because they, according to Donna, are responsible for publishing notice of the location dates and hours of early voting. The notice must be posted in the town clerk's office, on the official bulletin board of the town, other public buildings chosen by the registrars, on the town's website, and submitted to the elections division for posting on the secretary of commonwealth's website.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That you also contact her on this one instance stating that communications are now back on.
Yeah, as her director, because we know that she'll look at your emails and that way she'll be properly advised that she needs to be reading them.
Twice, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Cause that also then gives us, you know, we now have leverage.
Okay, all right, that is, that takes care of old business.
Um, I have a quick thing, this, this came up a number of weeks ago that I was gonna draft a memo regarding use of this room, and I did, and somehow it fell off the agenda, it's in the packets today, I don't know that it has a number.
I don't know, it's the very last one.
Yeah, can we?
And I, I don't care when we deal with it, I just wanna bring it up so that we can just get it done, not yet. I don't really, like, we can edit it all we like, I just think it's a good idea to have this, room's getting a lot of use, so.
Okay, can I please use the restroom?
Go.
Good. I'm gonna be, I'm going.
I'll be right.
Not there. Okay. So, on the seventeenth will be here, and that's when they'll open that box and get the, um, deposits out of there.
Okay, or is there?
Go ahead, there should be one in here, but, it's like at the bottom of the packets or today.
We know they come every other week.
I found, I was cleaning out my box, I'm like, hey, we never did this, so Melissa put it back in the package.
They were just here on Monday.
It's, it was dropped off, okay, so, uh, Monday seventeen.
It's usually here about, I'd say ten, it's probably a safe time.
Who is it?
It's, it was Hyden.
You always want to know this one thing. Okay, to exchange.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll make myself a note as well, that he should prepare to.
Because actually, well, I just left them.
All of a sudden, that.
Anything you think I left out?
I was saying that.
First word.
I can't see you quite, you know, like, before you, before you went, I did that there, so, but I was not home.
Oh, my God.
So, uh, yeah.
I know.
It won't be counted, I'm probably sure of that, but it's in the safe spot that I can just.
Just I know that, I imagine. In very, that was.
I wanted to make rules.
Because of the bad actors, and then every second of the day.
Well, it's not the way of the rules, but. But, oh, no, I wanted that, and, uh, it was only.
She may be under some kind of order from her lawyer.
All right.
Let's see, I'll hold it there. But she said in her meeting that she was willing to do it despite her, her expectations against it, so, goodbye, all.
All right, bye, have a great day, Mickey.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
At least it's sunny.
We are on to new business. Um, number twelve, administrative assistant counsel on aging outreach worker appointment, Catherine Roberts. So, I believe this will be an indefinite appointment, um, will there be a probationary period?
Yes, I'm sorry, three months probation period.
Okay, and the only question I had is, administrative assistant to the council on aging, is that because the position's kind of evolved to be someone who goes out and does outreach, but also does like minutes and stuff to the council on aging?
Yeah, the council on aging met and they determined that it's actually more an administrative position than it is the outreach, so they wanted administrative assistant added first with some outreach.
So, we will call it a council on aging administrative assistant and outreach worker?
Yeah.
And, good, I would move that we appoint Catherine Roberts as the council on aging administrative assistant and outreach worker as an indefinite appointment with a three-month probationary period.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, we'll call a vote on the motion to appoint Catherine Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
And, yeah, so three votes unanimous, and thank you, Catherine, for serving your role.
I have just a question as to the appointment paperwork. That goes to the town clerk now?
It always is going to the town.
Okay, and that comes from you?
Yeah. Good. And we actually, I don't wanna get it, I wanna keep today's meeting on task and on topic and on time, but, Melissa, you heard back from your small town administrators group, and the general consensus was that indefinite appointments who are kind of hired uh, to work for the town are generally not sworn in?
Right.
That's the consensus?
Such as employees, like.
Right, the highway.
Highway group, yeah.
So, we'll, obviously, anyone elected gets sworn in and then appointed to official positions like accountant and treasurer and town council.
When does that have national law, which I was gonna do a little more research on, but I just wanted to give you what I had back from.
Fired members?
Uh, fired chief, but not fired members.
Right.
And building inspectors?
I don't remember, I was just not.
I didn't see that on all of us.
I don't, I don't think he was, but that doesn't, it doesn't mean it was a complete list.
Right, either, okay.
Do we know that? No, he's a candidate.
But my other question. My, my other question would be, uh. Who would?
Let's just, who would elect that, and everybody hates them.
One, so my, my question would be, um, swearing in, but conflict of interest, right? That's good for everyone to have, because anyone could use their public position, except, anyone including a hired person could use their public position in a contrary to the state ethics law. But then the other question would be open meeting law, just in your research on who gets sworn in, um, who you, who typically takes, I would think every public employee or anyone with any capacity to have a really big conflict of interest, but open meeting law should really just be people who are on. but open meeting law should really just be people who are on boards.
Although, if the outreach worker is attending the meetings as a, their administrative assistant, they might, since they're participating in the meetings, they might also need OML, am I wrong?
They wouldn't need it, it wouldn't apply to them if they're not an appointed member of the community.
Ah, okay.
But it would be helpful for them to know so they can advise their local.
Of course, right.
Uh-huh, yeah.
It is.
I thought conflict of interest training was, was everybody that, that serves that.
Or to count any stuff.
Yeah, other than say the highway crew.
No, I think though, as we saw in Sanisfield, like highway people can.
The most people. No, you're right, you're right. Because that's on that same, you know, fifty bucks you pay on the driveway.
Did you, did you read about what happened in Sanisfield?
Not recently, no.
What was that called?
Uh, it's public, it's all interactions public, I think it's a lot of funny business.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So everybody needs conflict of interest, but I do think this one might also need OML as a useful thing, even if not required, right?
Yeah, the question is, we're trying to come up with a very clear understanding, who gets sworn in, who takes OML, who does?
The list, yeah, oh, yeah.
I'll try to do some more research on that.
All right.
I would think the more people take conflict and OML, the better we are.
Good.
Doesn't take more than half an hour to do a conflict.
Yeah, it's not hard, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what's.
Um, the next item is state of the schoolhouse, which I believe that I added. Um, last that we knew, we, Jim and the director and the highway department was working on sealing up the building, right? And then we were gonna get term in the exterminator company in there, which I think.
I don't remember seeing that part, but I do remember him looking into exterminator.
Well, the, the exterminator said we couldn't, they couldn't do anything until there were like two foot holes there. The reason I put on the agenda is this, is I don't have a clear plan or idea for what should happen to the schoolhouse, but it seems like one of those things that nothing is getting resolved, and it's not, the situation not getting any better by not resolving it, and that the board should think about what the town should do with the property and the building.
Again.
This is kicked down the road twenty years.
It just gets, exactly, it's, it's just nobody, it's a hot potato, but it's a hot potato that at this point needs to get cut open and buttered. So I, I think that it's a good point. So should we, I, we might need to put it on as a more major agenda item and think about what we need to have prepared to go forward on that.
Well, this is condemnable.
I think that it's.
It's already condemned.
It's, I thought it was structural lease out.
No, that was one.
We're being like a vacant policy, condemn, vending policy on it.
Yeah.
And so here's.
Now, there's got a lot of issues.
Here's the point, is if the town does want to fix it up or even try not necessarily to put anyone in it, but keep up with the maintenance, if it gets on the National Register of Historic Buildings, then the funds, it might save taxpayer money from the town, because there are certain funds available for keeping historic buildings from further deteriorating. I mean, there's always the option of selling the building, uh, and property, but I just wanted to raise it, because I think it's something that should be dealt with sooner than later. It's not improving by leaving alone.
They never do.
No.
I remember seven years ago, we went through the building and it was, you know, it was just, you shook your head, you said, how in the world was it ever allowed to get this bad? And then you went and saw exactly why it was allowed to get that bad, is because the Southern Brookers School District reneged year after year after year on their maintenance. That was fact, uh, you know, they were gonna match us ten thousand for ten thousand to fix the floor. I don't think that ever came to fruition on either part of the town or the school district, but we got a building that, that has no value, basically, in its current condition, or very little, and the property is so small.
And it's problematic, it has no apartment and no driveway.
And it's problematic. And probably no real subject system to speak of, maybe not even one big enough to accompany the size of the building for potential house, if somebody was supposed to have a three bedroom house there. How would they get a subject system in there and then access to it, et cetera, et cetera?
Exactly.
So many people have a lot of strong emotional ties to the building. I mean, I went to school there. I don't feel emotionally tied to the building. Uh, if it wasn't there, I certainly wouldn't cry. Uh, I felt more emotional about the T-room being removed than I would the schoolhouse, considering it's a detriment more than anything else. Perhaps, you know, uh, I, I don't know, I would, I think we should put a sales sign on it, myself.
So, okay, I'm gonna throw out there that one of us needs to take point on coming up with sketching out what the options, what the possible, the state of the building, and what options there could reasonably be, like, and we might say, well, we don't wanna do that, but, you know, declaring it a historic building and moving it to another site, declaring it a historic building and trying to sell the property, just selling the property, like, I don't even know what that list is, I'm just saying, in order to make an informed decision, I'd like to have a clear idea of exactly what the state of the property currently is, what would be required to fix it.
I think that that plan has already been created.
Okay, I don't know how outdated it is, but can we find it and update it?
It's, well, this is how outdated it is.
Right.
It's only a lot worse than it was, and the money down values have tripled.
Of course.
So we take the plan that we had, because we had all the plans to go in there and fix the floor and to do this and to fix the second floor and to redo all this, the heat system and everything, that's already been hashed out and worked over.
That would be to fix the building.
It was a complete comprehensive, yeah.
That would be to fix the building, what I'm saying is, we have a bunch of other options. One option is fix the building.
Mm-hmm.
One option is have it declared a historic building and sell the property, another option is move the building somewhere else and sell the property. And I'm just making this up as I go.
Well.
What are all possible things we could do, right?
We went and tried, we did the possibility of moving the building, and it was financially.
Non-sensical, okay.
Yeah, when that grid came in, they were like, no, everything has to go down. Um, I don't know what the reason to put this on a National Historic Register would be. I think that it brings a lot of encumbrances to the town to have that happen and to the building itself. Because at that point, changing the exterior of it becomes extraordinarily painstaking.
Mm-hmm.
And it ties your hands as to what you're allowed to do. Sure, there may be some funds for some of it, but I don't think there, I don't think, don't know for certain if those funds would be able to allocate for all the work that needs to be done to bring it back up to.
And then we have the problem.
And then what is the use going to be?
And the point of the septic and the parking. And the septic and parking remain an issue, right? Like, there's no way around it, given its actual site, am I correct?
Well, that was just one concern I raised, is aside from fixing the building, if we were to use it for a public purpose, where's the parking?
And where's.
Accessibility.
Then it's ADA compliance seemed to bring it up to post. Everything that was looked into eight plus years ago came to the desks and everybody looked at it and was just like, way too much.
Way too much money.
Yeah, for, for every aspect of it.
But then. Right. But then the issue is what to do?
Well, raise the building, sell the land.
Just like.
Raise the building and offer the land to the neighbors.
Or leave the building there and let the, whoever wants to do it, deal with, clean it out.
Sure. Yeah.
Um, and it would seem to me no one but the neighbors would be interested in having it, because there is no parking or septic or an ability to make parking, as far as I can see.
No, it's a real, real.
Am I wrong? Let me know if I'm wrong, because I could be mistaken.
I don't think that there's any grandfather in the parking across the street, especially seeing as how it hasn't been used in several years. Has it lost its status as a schoolhouse?
Do you want?
Has the use of the building changed, goes up after two years? Things don't maintain, you lose your use.
Right, right, right. Lose your use, yeah.
So the zoning would make it almost impossible possibly without going through the ZVA for specials or variances.
So if, if it, if it would work for the board, I can, uh, research it and try to come up with, uh, the available options and go from there.
And if you've got the time to put into it, what I would, I think the first thing you should probably do is to look for that old paperwork.
I have them.
And I have, yeah, Melissa gave me last year a report that was addressed to Ken, because I think he was chair at the time at the select board, and it had, uh, it had a, was it EDM? Yeah, EDM.
It was just E. What's EDM?
Uh, architectural contract and engineering firm, engineering.
I can't remember what their names are. I can't remember what their EDMs are.
It's a firm that did the assessment, okay.
And the construction costs were fairly low, and I'm sure probably are double or triple now. Um.
And then you get a building that is habitable, but by whom and what, and then.
Right.
Where do they park, where's the bathrooms, how do they get ADA?
And what's the state of the septic? Was that on there, do you know? The septic section, when they looked at the building?
I, I think they redid the septic not so long ago, but I.
So the septic might be, okay.
I know it's right on the swing side.
Another one, another one.
All right.
All right, so.
We'll look, I'll look into that.
Excellent, thank you for your hard work in advance.
Town administrative items, department roundtables.
Okay, so Sophia and I talked about it, and, um, we feel, the best for a list, we feel that, um, so we most usually have the police chief, building inspector, clerk, accountant, director of operations, fire chief, library director, community center administrative assistant, um, all present on a monthly basis. Um, as Sophia said before, it may not seem overly obvious why it's important to have them there, but having everybody present would allow us all to talk about staffing needs, supplies, building needs, upcoming projects, um, we would all be able to disseminate information to each other, creating more of a, a team. Um, I think Sophia compared us right now, called us, for more like everybody's their own island right now, and she'd like to get us all, you know, more cohesive and working together and keeping everybody in the loop. Um, and then maybe on a quarterly basis, add in, um, lower level staff and board or committee chairs, um, for, for your information. That's what we're suggesting.
Did you find a time that most people would be able to attend without a problem?
Um, I would just say I didn't. I mean, I think if you make it part of everybody's, you know, job, Wednesdays, I think most, I mean, nobody's gonna be, it can't be perfect, everybody's, if we have it at four thirty and people that leave at four, we have it at four, you have people that start at five, you know, um, so I, you know, I think everybody's going to have to bend a little bit.
But if everybody has a workday that day, it's easier to bend than if there are three people on the list that don't even work Wednesdays for a while.
I will check that with what I'm experiencing, if anybody has a workday and then one's a weekend, you know.
And so, man, just ask, how, what happens when it falls apart? Well, let me just say this, what happens if this grand plan doesn't bear fruit and that people don't show up?
Well, that's why I asked you guys to make it mandatory.
Well, still, even if it's mandatory, we've got whips and chains, how, how do you get people to actually do it? And then what happens to them if they don't show up?
I guess.
Just, we need a whole nother list of.
I guess it would be an act of insubordination, right, and you would have to deal with, with that. I mean, if, if you're, if you're as a department that expected to keep people, you know, the town in the loop and, and you're not doing that.
Is this cross to the employee handbook, that people were hired on, at a certain expectation, and now we're making mandatory meetings of them? How does that fit into that?
I'm not sure it does, but I may not be understanding your question completely.
I understand.
Well, I'm just saying that it.
I think everybody's job description says other duties as assigned, so I think this would be.
Well, that, then that could be the answer that I was just looking for. I'm just trying to, like Barbara used to do, you gotta throw questions out there amongst us, rather than having to field them from the, the committee, so that we have some answers. So if somebody says, well, you know, it's not in my job description to show once a month on a mandatory meeting, nowhere does it say that, how do you get around that?
But as, as other duties are described, right, were you gonna say to me this?
Well, if it says something like that, then that's maybe the slippery slope that we, that we have.
They all should say that. Right.
So I'm just trying, I want it to work, but I don't know how it's, how you're gonna get it all to happen.
You know, I think if the board comes into it with a positive attitude supporting it, I know mandatory is a strong word, but maybe you, if you can explain through what Sophia and I have said, why it's important and why you're making it mandatory, maybe people won't come into it with such a sour attitude and we'll give it a chance, you know? I think if we immediately go into it with negative, then they're gonna fail.
Does it, does it have to take place in town hall?
Well, I think. Well, I can see, I can see the, the idea behind teamwork. I already do see a Tuesday, Thursday schedule conflicting with a Wednesday, Friday schedule, and.
Who has a Tuesday, Thursday?
Uh, Don, Trico.
Okay.
Um, I think the flip side of the coin, I understand the teamwork and working together, and I think that's also part of the role constantly of the town administrator and the select board, is to stay abreast of what's, what different departments have going on and to coordinate between departments. And this places a burden, and maybe it's worth it, but on departments. And also, I think, you know, in some ways it is like little islands, but if, if departments are functioning well, if the building department is functioning well, then maybe it's fine to kind of have independence. And what it, what kind of message is it sends that you have to be here once a month at four PM on a day that you don't work, or you have to come early? Um, because, I mean, it'd be one thing if things weren't running well, but I mean, if it's running well.
Well, I think you assume things are running well, sometimes these meetings bring out whether things actually are working well or not. And I just, since you brought Don in as an example, he's, he's got six posted hours here, but he has another eight that he works, and he varies on those days, so I wouldn't see why a Wednesday wouldn't be workable.
I'm also gonna throw out there that, um, having worked for a number of different organizations where we had staff meetings weekly, and like, it's, it, you know, when I was in DC, it was every week the senior staff met. And, and I mean, not that we didn't sometimes have meetings outside that individually, but as a group, we met every week. That was a normal, and most people I know that are in professional jobs have weekly staff meetings, not even monthly. At Simon's Rock, they got, you know, administrative meetings, there's a department meeting once a month, there's a faculty meeting once a month, there's a faculty and staff meeting, they call it something else, but it's like more than faculty, once a month. And there's a community meeting once a month, right? Like, I think the majority of business places that aren't small independent operators have weekly or monthly meetings. I don't, I don't think that's an abnormal thing, and Sophia alluded to it too. So I, I see your point, like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. On the other hand, I can say as someone who regularly participated in those meetings, even though sometimes sitting through a faculty meeting makes you feel like you're in dental surgery without no key, I often felt, you know, that it was not a bad process to have sat through, right? That I did learn about things that were happening that I would not probably have otherwise known. I did hear grievances vented that I might have poo-pooed, but when I heard the person speak as they did, thought, oh, okay, maybe they have a point, right? Like, important information was more often imparted at those meetings than I might otherwise have expected. Um, and I do think that it does create a sense of cohesion. Um, and I can even speak at Simon's Rock, there had been some difficulties in the science department, because it's science and math, but physically, the math people are in a different building, because there wasn't enough room in the, in the science and math building. And let me tell you, the downstream effects of that over ten years have been enormous and problematic, right? They still are coming together at that once a month meeting, but even that is not enough to overcome that separation of which should be greater unity. Um, so I feel like it, it, it might have more positive effects. What if we tried it for a year?
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we can say mandatory, or we can say, we're instituting this policy, we think it's really important, and we ask that everybody make their best effort to be present at those meetings, please give it a year and, and see at, at the end of that, if you can come back to us with whether you feel they were worthwhile. Like, we can, we don't have to be like, you gotta go to this meeting, 'cause you're bad people, we wanna waste your time. Right, we can be like, we think this. Right, we can be like, we think this will be helpful, we want you to give it a try, we want you to go in with a positive feeling, and see if in fact it's worth your one hour a month, or forty-five minutes a month, to build a more positive cohesion and make sure there's a good exchange of ideas.
I like the idea, I think that, I, I think that's a good way to approach it. Uh, compulsory, maybe instead of mandatory, perhaps, if, what are we doing, once a month?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a reason why the human resources director is not one of the department heads also here?
Because these would be put on by Sophia and I, her and I would be at every meeting.
Is that a motion from you, Susan?
Sure, uh, hmm, I move that we, um, proceed with monthly department head meetings, um, put on by the town administrator and the human resources director, to bring together the various department heads, um, to make sure there's adequate flow of information, and, um, a better sense of cohesion among the different departments. Um, and that those meetings should be, it's a word, compulsory, um, in the spirit of cooperation.
Thank you.
Let's give it a trial, let it twelve month trial.
Yeah. Any further discussion on that motion?
Is there a second?
Scott's adding.
Okay.
No, okay, we'll call a vote. Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Uh, no, and the motion carries.
Uh, just question, that people getting paid for that, right?
They have to.
They have to be, it's.
So.
The playtime.
Goes back to budgeting. That was never budgeted into anybody's line item.
That is true.
So now we've got fifteen people twelve times a year, at various rates.
Well.
It's just, just, I, I hate to be the devil's advocate, it's just thinking outside the box.
No, yeah, yeah.
I vote a no, and I'm not against the spirit of cooperation and working.
Well, just because you voted no, doesn't mean we can't raise another motion to squash the.
No.
And I just speak to your.
I mean, I understand, I, I understand your point, but I, I also feel like giving it at least a try, you, if they can't blame us, try it.
I understand, I just, I think in some ways we'd like these questions ironed out, and I think some of these people are salaried, and some people will fall on their shift. But rolling out, um, things that we're now making compulsory of department heads without fully figuring out, I mean, I, I know every time we roll out a plan like this, there are gonna be things that come up and things that you can't plan for. But after the pay, I think after the payroll time clock software went out, and there were a lot of unanswered questions, I would feel, uh, I, it didn't, it didn't feel good to have, to roll out with so many unanswered questions, and really be patching together problems as they arose, instead of coming out with more of a comprehensive plan to begin with. But I understand at some point you do need to just start it and see what comes up.
This is a really good point that Scott's raised, though, are there any other, besides the difficulty scheduling, and the question of the budgeting issue, what other substantive issues would we need, can we already think of that might be an issue that we need to address before enacting the policy?
We didn't say when the policy would be enacted, you just said that we thought it would be a good idea and that.
Right. But still, your point's a really good one, and Melissa, do you have an answer for Scott, or a potential answer?
Well, looking at my list, most everybody is salary, um, or contracted, like the accountant is contracted, and it is in there for them to have meetings with us. Um, I will find out if the library director and the community center are, if it falls within that shift. The clerk has two discretionary hours, so she could use it once a month for that, and the building inspector only has six posted hours, so he has eight hours that he can also play with. So I don't, I don't think that's creating.
The only downside would be that if they're already using those hours for other work, right, that could be.
It's gonna be less than an hour once a month, so I, I think if the department head can't plan for that, then maybe we have some other issues. And, and since you brought up payroll, I mean, this would have been a, a great example of why these meetings would have been useful. You know, people could ask questions, I mean, although I'm not having any issues with the two departments right now, so.
Do you have a question, Scott?
I did, but I kinda wanted to see you.
Okay, sorry. Are, are there any other specific thoughts you have on this?
No, I mean, I guess we'll see, that's the, I mean, I think here, no, here's the other thing, is demanded, so these meetings already been going on, Melissa's, uh, held a number of them, and the only change is we're making them mandatory, and I think, um, and not the only change, but one, you know, that's why she brought it to the board. Um, what, I understand cooperation and working together as a team to solve the problems of the town, but what kind of message are you sending sometimes to people who've been at department head for years, seem to be running off as well, and then sometimes change, change is difficult, I just don't want the select board to come across as, you know, throwing more burdens on people who may be running an office well. Um, and, and that maybe these coordinated between departments is something that the town administrator and select board should focus on without necessarily making a compulsory meeting on a monthly basis, but I'm not, you know, totally opposed to it.
My only question in what you said is, why would, I would never assume that the reason to pass someone to a meeting to share information was that they were not doing a good job. Like, that would never be my assumption, that that, like, it's to find out what's going on in the other departments, or to let people know was something that you would appreciate it if they could do, whether it's like, hey, we had a.
Or will help you money.
Right, hey, we had a tree come down in the yard of the library, Jim, can you do something about that, or whatever, not that you wouldn't communicate that anyway, probably more expediently, not waiting for that meeting. But I'm just saying, it would never be my assumption that it had anything to do with someone not doing their job, that, it, I didn't agree with.
Well, it's not discipline.
No, it's not disciplinary.
Q and A, right?
I, I would have assumed so, it's about communicating with the other departments, it's not about, it's no, there's no punitive implication, at least, not to me, that's certainly not why you have a faculty meeting or division meeting.
Well, what if, what if, what if there were at least six of these meetings were compulsory? Uh, you know, like, or at least the very first one, we want everybody on board for this.
How about we make it compulsory, we can make it compulsory for three, the first three months? Just to get people in the habit.
Can we, can we just, we did make a motion that would not, unless there's really any changes, not, do we, is there any new motion, or we made the motion, carry?
Okay. Okay. Let's carry, okay.
Okay, accept a hundred dollar police donation, I would move that to town, accept the hundred dollar donation to the police.
Yay.
And that was from?
I don't know if we really.
It's a letter, right?
Yeah, Dan Robbins.
Well, he should be thanked for that.
Yeah.
Gotta thank him.
Thank you, Dan Robbins.
And, and do we know why? We don't know why he did? Okay?
No, just that we have to accept.
Seven mighty chismus.
Alright, so I move that we accept a hundred dollar donation to the police department from Dan Robbins.
Second.
Second, and any further discussion or comment, they're being done, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, unanimous, motion carries, thank you. Uh, C is the Med-X renewal, um, the renewal rates.
So Med-X is the only one that renews out our policies in January instead of in the first year.
Did this go down?
Yeah.
Sorry, it never happens with medical policies, what the heck?
One of them did, one of them went up, um, slightly, one sixty percent.
Okay, gotcha, wow.
All of our current retirees are on the one that went up one sixty percent.
Of course they are.
Alright, I would move that we accept this.
Second.
Uh, yes, yeah, is there any, no discussion, we'll call a vote, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes. Um, the motion carries, and up, I'm signing this.
Do we all have to sign or just?
There are just four most likely.
So before you go on, you kind of, you pushed off the, um, timetable for the reviews, can I explain this so we can get?
Yeah, um, so we're jumping back to, uh, item four of the twelve pin meeting, item four in total, right?
Yeah.
So.
I think two, is it three or four?
Is it this one?
Was it the timetable?
Yes, I knew the timetable.
So the general idea, if I'm not mistaken, is that reviews will occur generally in January, so that we have the results by February, um, to consider any possible, uh, raises in the budget.
Now increases, right.
I mean, it's listed as three on here, and that's why I was confused.
I had a little bit of back and forth with Sophia. Oh, you were gonna discuss the, the, exactly who is being reviewed and by whom?
Yeah, so Sophia and I talked today, and we agree on this schedule.
The one that's listed as number three, okay.
So that department heads would review their employees between, sometime in January, and get it to us by January fifteenth. Sophia and I would review department heads during that same timeframe, and then she obviously is in review meeting, um, with your assistants, I'm assuming.
This is February fifteenth, by the way, not January fifteenth?
Yeah, so.
Okay, you said January.
Did I say September?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
I'm here. Um, so during January to have them by February fifteenth.
Okay.
And then Sophia and I, assuming you were for this, and I, we should get on this fairly quickly, since she's only here once a week. Um, her and I would like to have a preliminary meeting with all the department heads to provide the forms, go over the format, give a mobile training session on how best to, um, handle review sessions, evaluation sessions.
So I think this is a good development. My question, or my, I think that it'd also be very helpful if we have a very clear list, and I know we can say it's common sense, but it's not, there's some, there's some, you know, positions that I'm not sure if they're gonna be reviewed or not, or by whom. Can we have a clear list of who is being reviewed and by whom, like, is each, um, it, like, the highway department's simple, right? The, the director of operations reviews all of the highway workers, all of the transfer station attendants, does the swap shop volunteer get reviewed?
They're volunteers, so I don't, you know.
So I wouldn't think they would, I just wanted to clarify.
This is just paid employees, I suppose, I thought we were assuming?
No, look, I think probably we genuinely agree, but it'd be really good to have a list, that we would make sure in February that they all got done.
Okay. I have that here.
Um, also, yeah, so now I can use, cause now we've got, there's February fifteenth on here, but there's also February first on here.
Yeah, no, that was the title.
The first or the fifteenth?
Should have said fifteen.
Okay.
Um, the only ones that would not, that we're not dealing with at the moment is the fire department, because Sophia and I need to have a little more conversation about the construction.
Current structure of the company, fire company?
Yeah, the employees, and, you know, just how it, how HR issues are being handled.
Is that, is that within our jurisdiction?
Well, we're paying their salary, right?
The firemen themselves, the volunteers, well, I guess they're no longer volunteers.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
Yeah, this reads fine, I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, the other question.
I think your, your request for comprehensive lists, right, I'm sorry.
And then the other question is regarding merit raise, are we gonna deal with that in the employee handbook, that there's no, um, questions there as to what makes someone eligible? I understand that generally employee reviews, I don't know who can have access to them, like, are the select board and finance committee gonna be sitting in a meeting? We're probably not gonna be looking at, uh, performance reviews of every employee, right, isn't that fairly, now, naturally, are we going to be? That's what, does that make sense?
So, in other words, after the, um, reviews are done, and it goes into the records, what happens to that other than it goes into the record? Is, that's the question you're raising, so what's the process for bringing that forward to do assessments of their salaries?
Well, I think this is all headed in the right direction, of reviews, and possibly having raises based on merit.
Right. No, we need that one, yeah.
The, how does, this was kind of my point with the harassment problem, how exactly, what are the steps? Does the HR director report that, just make the recommendations? And then the select board and finance committee either agree with them or don't? If the select board and finance committee have questions, do, do they have access to the reviews? Um, we certainly wouldn't deal with them in an open meeting, so just like, what, what are the steps for, you know, if a review warrants uh, discipline and determination, if a review warrants a merit raise, if it warrants nothing, who sees it and when and why?
So can we get you that information, but approve the timetable for now, so that we can at least get started on?
Yeah, the timetable starts.
Yeah, and I, and I think that your point's well taken, that those are things that should be fleshed out in the handbook, and as, and since that's on, ongoing, that would be part of that process, because we, we absolutely do need to be clear on what happens with that information after the reviews are done.
Right, those reviews are not personal.
Yeah.
When we did a review, the employee was right in front of us, for, select board did the reviews, that was long before we had any of this assistance.
Right.
Other than Melissa's assistance, that's the.
But we weren't doing merit raises, so after that, it would just in their employee file, so the question is next.
Yeah, basically, it would just boil down to a COLA. Or, and, you know, I don't think anybody ever did get one, because, you know, they're.
Well, COLA basically means it's everybody, right, but that's the difference between a merit raise and a COLA. COLA is across the board, whereas a merit raise means that someone can be recognized for exceptional, um, work, or the opposite, if it's necessary.
Correct, correct. Okay, so if we're all set with that, Melissa will work on fleshing out the details with Sophia, though we're generally fine with the January, February timeline. Um, we'll move on to mail-in correspondence, I think, did everyone see the letter from the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee? Um, they more or less said that they are struggling with the process of the regional school district planning board, and they consider withdrawing from the process unless the pause can be taken.
Are we aware of anything, that letter dated a while back, are we aware of any other outcomes as a result of that?
I am.
Yeah, was there a rebuttal?
Don, over here, Don, what, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, um, that came up at the last meeting just a week ago, of the, uh, of the big town board. And, um, it.
Can I just clarify, at the, at the RSD PB board, that letter that the SBR SD sent back came up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, and, and, and it got a good, uh, twenty minutes of discussion, uh, at the end of the meeting. Uh, and it was actually very positive, because it started out with the main, uh, proponent of the letter complimenting the chair on having set a good tone for that meeting, uh, and appreciating how that meeting went. Um, then, uh, our member from, uh, Laura Rodriguez made a motion to have a facilitated meeting uh, to further air out the issues. Uh, but they came, the issues came down to basically, and that meeting, uh, is gonna come down basically to talk about pers- personal relations, not about the fundamental issues, so.
I, I was just gonna ask, she said Laura made a motion, was the motion accepted?
And it was, it was approved, yeah, yeah, we have to find somebody in the budget, but we're gonna have, uh, a meeting in which we, we talk that stuff out, because.
It did seem to me that the letter itself mentions several substantive issues other than just process issues.
Yeah, yeah, it, it did, and the, the, the letter's somewhat over the top, and you, you could read it. During the meeting, I, I, I asked, um, the people, the four people who had signed on to it, if you really read this letter, it sounds like you wanna quit, unless the rest of the board changes its vote on having a merge of the high school, is, is that what we're at? Nobody answered that either yes or no. And they, uh, we had a tentative, not a vote, but an expression of opinion, which a lot of people, the majority, said they liked the proposal to have on the ultimate board, three from Great Barrington, two from Sheffield, and one from each of the other towns for a board of eleven. And that discussion was very positive, the only person, only one person, um, uh, diss. And that discussion was very positive, the only person, only one person, um, uh, dissented from it in, in view, uh, concerned about, she would have preferred that there be a balance of five-five between the southern towns and the northern town, but that's, that, I don't think this is going anywhere. So actually, it was very positive in terms of moving the process forward. Um, and the, the next main issue will be the one of financing. And frankly, although I thought that was gonna be divisive, I, I think the tech people have come up with a plan, so that everybody's assessment remains the same.
The, the thing that concerned, the, the other substantive issues that I thought were raised in that letter, um, that you, that you haven't mentioned, were numbers concerning not just how it would be financed, but the budget of the building itself, what it would actually cost, what would be involved in that building, and what programs would be offered in it, all of which are huge issues that ultimately affect the cost pretty substantively, I thought. And my impression from the letter was that they felt that they had raised some of these issues, and that they had not ever gotten, there hadn't been adequate discussion or resolution to this.
Yeah, that was a surprise, frankly, because th- those particular issues had not been raised before at our meetings. I think what must have happened is that they sent questions in to Jake, and that his replies to them were not satisfactory to them, but I don't know what the questions were, and I don't know what the answers were.
So, unless, um, there's nothing for our board to act on at the moment, other than stay up to date.
Nothing, nothing at all.
Um, so if there's no opposition, we will move on.
Okay.
And quickly, um, but stay up to date, because eventually we'll come to our town. Um, Smitty Pigotelli is looking into the DCR, um, parking pass options for non, uh, non-citizens who are residents. Just to acknowledge that we heard back from on that. Um, unless there's any more comments on that, we will move into minutes.
Okay.
Um, I did not get to, uh, the executive sessions, and we may need to, uh, go into executive session to deal with them.
Do we wanna start with nine fourteen?
Yeah, if we, if we could do nine fourteen and nine twenty-one today.
And then during executive session, we'll do both of the executive sessions at once?
That would catch me up. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Uh, quickly, yes.
Yeah. So nine fourteen will begin with. Let me know if there are any questions.
Did Mary actually say they have dance parties every night?
Where is that?
Uh, first paragraph, second, it's not the first sentence.
Regularly, we could say, or frequently?
Something like that, because every night is.
A little.
A little.
So I'll say.
Makes me wanna go down there. Pretty. It's life in town. Just while we're doing this, can, can we, um, ask the owners of the general store, please come to our meeting?
Do you want to?
Yeah, I do.
I get constant questions about it, I just like to know what the scoop is, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Very much.
I mean, we don't have any say over it, we're just like the town.
Very, just for the town to act on. Just common sense, just.
Just a final, yeah, and a way, and a way to disseminate information in the community, because there's a lot of people, I get, I probably get three of them.
At least.
So Chapin, I'll invite Chapin.
Whoever is.
Curly or?
The police, or?
Yeah.
I think Chapin.
Yeah, or it is, or whoever he wants to send, or him. But I think, you know, we're gonna talk to Kamana, we'd like to.
Yeah.
This guy is, to me, is a bigger, I'm gonna say he's a bigger fish, but I didn't, I don't know. So, he's just something I'd like to speak to. Second paragraph, you're blue.
Mm-hmm.
If you write, so the only enforcement possibility for excessive noise is streaming, not be good.
Um, in number, are we going through?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any, most of the change of your mind, I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Yeah, sure. I made a mistake when I changed on number five, because then I read oddly in the middle, um, Susan, unacceptable. And noted if a supervisor asks you to meet, um, you do not say you are unavailable for five weeks after a presidate, yeah?
So, what are you changing there?
What are you adding?
And noted that if a supervisor asks to meet you, I cross out do not tell them you can, but, I, and put are unavailable. What it should read is, to meet you, you should not say you are avail, you are unavailable.
You should not say.
Should not say.
Does that have to even be in there? Or, or, or baiting?
Um, no, I'm just trying to put some words in there that actually make a sentence. That, that was off, right.
Yeah, 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 I added a comma, you should not say.
Yeah.
On that fourteen, let's go. Melissa, did you increase the font size of these things in the future? I have such problems with my eyes, I saw it over all the years, it's hard to read.
You're, you're not alone in the problem with the font size. I, I can handle it, but I totally get it, yeah, I know. One of the advantages of a computer is that you can blow that sucker up. Using a lot of paper. Okay. Alright.
Uh, motion to approve nine fourteen twenty-two, with two other, two changes, and then frequently have a dance party instead of every night. And you should not say you in paragraph five.
Second.
Uh, call a vote soon.
Yes.
Scott said we have some just. Yes, so. Minutes are approved.
Now we're on nine four?
Yeah. Whoa.
He's art attacking.
Yeah.
Okay, looks like in three F, you've got one of our.
Yeah. Can we go with purple? I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Um, I think we're getting to the same place, go with your changes.
Okay. Um, number six, the last, the last sentence that he had about the party of the policy?
Part.
Part of the policy, okay. I'm like, party the first word, that's her. Sorry.
All night.
No, I still have party time, wait. If you do, I got nothing else.
So, I would move to approve the minutes of nine twenty-one, with only being, changes being on page two F. We'll go with Susan's edits rather than my edits, and number six, uh, part rather than party. And is there a second?
Second.
And call a vote to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, unanimously approved. So, do you want?
Now we've got.
Initial.
Sorry. So now we're up to date on minutes, because we're gonna do the executive session, one's in an executive session, and we have a nine twenty-eight and stuff.
I, oh, yeah.
If we do two in one meeting, we cut that. If we do one, we stay, but if we do less than one.
Well, we're, we're, we're catching up.
Catching up. Um, there is unanticipated business and comments and questions, Bob, but I know that you had your letter.
Yeah.
Um, I did try, I didn't, I tried to set a two-hour time limit for this meeting, given we've been running long.
I'm okay with us bumping it, I just want it not falling into the.
Yeah.
I read it, I read it, I thought it was all, that's fine.
Did I put on the next agenda?
It's fine with me, I just don't want it to fall into the abyss again.
I will, I will make sure it isn't.
I only found it when I was going through old documents, awesome.
We're not doing nine twenty, it's executive, no.
No, I didn't get to the.
Correct, it's, we're gonna do them in executive session anyway.
Um.
We don't have to announce that executive session, right? We can just do it.
I'm gonna ask, should I, I'll ask Donna, because she said something at the, a recent meeting, and she said, you, as long as they're listed on there, but, and she said basically that we could go in, uh, but we had posted an executive session or something else, I'm not too concerned, it's just board business.
Right.
But.
I don't see why we should have to advance word about going into executive session to look at the executive session, but I'm a breakable.
But we didn't, if I'm not mistaken, Melissa, we did last year.
Posted when we're gonna do it.
Yeah, but I will check with Donna, if that's all right.
Okay.
And just see, um, and maybe even Alex, who's still in the other place. If, is there any unanticipated business or comments and questions from the, from the public, Don Kober?
Yeah, one comment. Um, when I went to look at for the June twenty-eighth, um, YouTube, it wasn't on, and I asked.
June twenty, or September twenty? Okay.
Um, and I asked Melissa about it, and she said that the tech people had told her that if there's an executive session as part of the meeting, then the whole meeting cannot be published on YouTube.
We're working on it, we're working to find a way to edit the video down, we just don't have that in place yet. I know this has been an issue going back to February, and I had a movie file, and I thought it'd be simple enough to find a program to just edit it, edit out the executive session, and I didn't. I mean, I'm sure it's not rocket science, but I didn't myself get that done yet. So, we are working on making meetings where we have an executive session, uh, making the open meeting post-able to YouTube, we just don't, we haven't done that yet.
I, I was wondering if maybe there's some kind of motion that counsel could provide you with, that during the meeting, you could move that the film is just to stop.
We could, and some, we've done it different ways in the past year, sometimes we have recorded through, and sometimes we haven't. Um, I think ideally what we would do is record through and then edit out the executive session.
I, I think the problem is that I did inquire, can we stop the film? And if we started again, would it give us a second one? But apparently not, it's aware you're still in the meeting, so it upends them, even if you turn off and can turn back on again. So we would have to literally exit the meeting completely, and then we start.
Whatever, it would be nice, wherever you could find it.
It would be, we're working on it.
Did I correctly state that?
Yes, and it would have to be a whole new login.
Right, so people would have to re-log in.
And on at least one occasion, we tried to not record, and it recorded any. So, technical difficulties, but the hope will be that every meeting, if there's an executive session portion, we can just post the open meeting portion, and we haven't, only because of technical difficulties.
Sorry about that.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Vote.
Alright, yes.
Yes, and meeting adjourned at ten six, at two oh six P M.